The planning board meeting on Tuesday, September 15th will come to order. And right now, we'll take the items as they are on the agenda. The first item is a lot release for Matthew's Way 288 Sutton Street.
The locus is on the screen. This is a five lot subdivision off of Sutton Street. You can see it's roughly across from Thondike and Columbia off of Sutton. All paperwork prior to any lots being released from the covenants have been completed. So we have the Form I, the Form M, the Homeowners Association recorded document. Steve has made a contribution to the sidewalk fund in the amount of $3,600 per Tim Willett's estimate. And he's provided a roadway bond in the amount of $44,250. And that spreadsheet has been included in your packet.
So we're going to accept the bond and release the lots, right? Those are the two things.
Yep. He's requesting all five lots. I have the Form J stamped by his engineer.
So you're okay with the -- you think the DPW is okay with the amount of money? And what form is the bond going to be?
It's cash bond. It's already posted.
Okay. Good.
So he gave a check and that was posted. I have emailed correspondence from Tim that he did establish that amount and he established the spreadsheet.
Okay.
Tim Willett from the DPW.
So anybody have any questions?
I do.
Yeah, go ahead.
Private road or public road?
Private.
Okay.
And it was noted on the plan as private?
Tim has $2,000 in there for conveyance to the town in his spreadsheet. So that's the only comment is that...
What did the decision say?
It's a private.
It said private in the decision, but the spreadsheet from Tim, so if they wanted that...
We just have a little extra question.
If you want a motion that he can move that to contingency?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
I think that would be appropriate. We'll just hold it for that.
You'll get interested on it. I'll make a motion that we accept the lot releases for...
And approve the bond.
I was going to do it this effort, but...
Okay, if you want to do it, we'll do the bond first.
Okay. The bond for, what is it, 288 Sutton Street in the amount of, what is it, $44,875?
$250, $44,250.
$44,250. And the $2,000 per conveyance of the roads to the town will be moved into a contingency line item.
Just one second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I'll make a motion to release the lots for 288 Sutton Street.
The five lots, right?
Five.
That's one of the five.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. You're good?
Thank you.
Our friends...
They're all out there.
We did not even see Mr. Smolak stand up. That was pretty good. He didn't have to open his mouth or stand up.
Better than John usual does on that. We put some, maybe flipped some of the documents to the documents at hand here.
They're flipped.
Something that has a overall, best single overall parcel map.
So the plans are part of that.
Okay, that's fine. That's what's best.
I believe it's 20 gauges. Just take a second.
Yeah, Jean, yeah, if you can, okay, after you get that...
Let's try to get to...
Just something that sort of shows the whole locus and shows where the building footprint is. Maybe you guys have that and you can...
I think, Jean, if you went back, there was something...
Yeah, it's just a... It's going to take a little bit to load, but...
There we go. Okay. But that's what we're looking for, so we'll have that. Okay. So Jean, can you sort of recap where we are?
So the last meeting, the ZBA findings had not been submitted. They have been time stamped in at the clerk's office. Everybody has a copy of those findings. Application material was sent to both Eggleston Environmental and that was last Wednesday, I believe electronically on Tuesday. Last Wednesday she received the hard copy. At 5:00 today, she submitted some preliminary comments and she cautioned they are preliminary. But that way you were able to have something for tonight. The applicant did not receive them until 5:00 either, so they were in hard copy for you. Hancock's package was sent in the mail yesterday, so there are several engineers. They will have to sub out the structural analysis. So I asked the applicant to speak with Joe Peznola at Hancock to decide upon the structural engineer and what that is going to contain. A request for continuance has been received again as discussed at last meeting. It was requested to continue the hearing until 10:06 and waiving time constraints for the filing until 10:13. So that's the following Wednesday of it. Nope, Tuesday. The applicant has submitted information again as follow-up items to last week's meeting that gave sample sizes of canopies, both pictures as well as a list of the type of canopy and the size and scope of those canopies. They provided information in a presentation that everybody should have received answering questions, but I have the presentation if you do want to go through those answers. And a corrective affidavit was submitted because of a application issue that Lynn had identified at the last meeting.
Was that last night?
The owner of the project was listed as Osgood, if I remember right, 1600 Osgood LLC and it should have been 1600 Osgood Street LLC.
Okay. So what I'd like to do is to maybe first concentrate on those things that came up the last time and then we have more questions obviously tonight because we've gotten further into it. So can you first sort of address some of the things that we talked about last time you were going to get back to us on?
Could I ask a question first?
You can do whatever you'd like. If you identify for yourself for the record first, then you could do anything.
Michael Rosen, counsel for the applicant. I know at the last meeting and then after the last meeting, there was some discussion with Attorney Orvalos about reviewing the legalities as far as whether this was a special permit or a plan approval. And I know that there was some discussion about whether you could discuss it in executive session or where that would come out. But from our perspective, it is important to us to know whether, you know, which we're going under and whether we need a super majority vote or a majority vote and kind of some of the formalities following that. So I was wondering if you guys had it or you as a board had an opportunity to confer or confer with town council.
We did. And I think that given the decision of the ZBA, we would treat it as a plan approval not as a special permit. So that's the path that we should march down.
Thank you very much.
But I wanted to note on that, plan approval under Osgood requires four out of five also, a super majority in the bylaw, just so you know.
Okay, I'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Were there any I know? The list that was circulated by Christine on September 3rd started with legal questions and issues. And so before I hand it over to Dan, I thought I would kind of answer any of those if you still had questions on any of them and then get out of the way and let... So for instance, one was, does the petitioner, Osgood Solar, have the legal standing for the project? That arose with the question of who signed the consent. It was originally signed by 1600 Osgood LLC instead of 1600 Osgood Street LLC. We did submit a corrective affidavit. I would like to know that that's acceptable and that resolved that issue.
It's not signed in the name of the county. It's an affidavit, right?
Yeah, it's a... No different than anything else that's a...
I don't know. I'm just saying it's an affidavit, so, I mean, it's fine, but I guess if everyone else...
I mean, I can have it re-signed in front of a notary and under the patent...
Well, no, just need a notary. You only need one or the other to be an affidavit. So I'm just saying, as an affidavit, but I'm not like town council, so I'm just, I don't know how everyone else feels about that.
Well, we just got that, so I sort of pass on that. We'll just add that to the list of questions we'll ask town council.
Okay. Then we can resolve that problem. There were questions about testimony having transpired since the original application relating to members' eligibility to vote. I think that becomes moot if it's plan approval because as I understand it, only alternates can vote on special permits and not on plan approval, which means the only discussions have been in front of the five original members and those would be the five voting. Needed to confirm that the continuances were submitted, so those have been submitted. Confirmed that all revised documents are part of the application and have been submitted. So I guess I would probably look to...
Well, you submitted what you submitted, whether we think it's...
Again, I'm just going down your list of questions and making sure I answer them all for you.
Doesn't mean we necessarily are not going to ask for more information or we think your...
Correct.
...word is complete.
Okay. I think on that then, those are the legal questions that you guys asked with that. I'll turn it over to Mr. Leary. Thank you.
Good evening, Dan Leary. So if we could, can I just go through the presentation to answer the...
We don't want to hear anything in the economics. We want to just focus on the site and we want to focus on technical things.
Yes, sir.
So...
So the presentation that was in there addressed the comments that were sent to us by the planning department, things like milestones and a lot of the questions that were asked. I'll just run through these slides if that's all right. Feel free to stop me in the middle.
Yeah, but like this, you're off to a bad start because I don't care about your timelines and milestones. I mean, I'm not sure how that's germane to what we're doing here.
Before we go into it, you have an, you, just so you, this may be for legal, I think we might, should probably address this, is you, the notice for, was for a special permit in the legal notice that was published in the newspaper and we have an application for you to withdraw without prejudice because per your own words, is a request for withdrawal of our application without prejudice due to defective and likely confusing public notice of Osgood Plan Approval Application. And I believe that is correct, that this was defective and likely confusing since you applied under the legal notice of the special permit.
So we didn't apply under legal notice for special permit. The publication that was submitted to the newspaper called it a legal notice for special permit. That was one of the original reasons that we raised a request to withdraw and that request was denied.
No, it wasn't denied. We didn't vote on it.
It was denied and I believe the exact words were, "We will give up the leverage we have over them if we allow them to withdraw." And so we were told we couldn't withdraw because it would give up the leverage, so we said, "Okay." We then had that matter reviewed by council and council has told us that the standard for legal publication in the state of Massachusetts is if it would give a reasonable person reasonable notice of the matters being set forth before the board. So it's our belief that this in fact gave a reasonable person reasonable notice as to what was being set forth before the board, which is a request to build solar project at this property.
I disagree that we ever voted on the withdrawal, just so you know. Are you rescinding your withdrawal?
If you would like us to formally rescind it, then we formally rescind it. Again, if you go back to your meeting, the specific quote on the record at the meeting is, "By allowing them to withdraw, we are giving up the leverage we have over them and therefore we should not allow them to withdraw."
Was there a vote on that, though?
There was an assent and nods of the board and that was your determination at the end of that hearing.
Yeah, so there was no vote on it then.
Call it what you will, okay? You made a statement on the record that you were not allowing us to withdraw. If you would like me to formally withdraw, we will formally withdraw that request.
I think we should, for housekeeping, I think we probably should have them withdraw.
Let's hold it. Let me talk to town council about that, but fair enough.
I'd rather get to the stuff about the project.
I do, I do have, to one of the legal points, I did pull out the bylaws real quick. I don't believe that the four of five vote is correct. I believe it's just a majority, not a super majority. And let me walk you through and I will explain that to you.
No, please, let's go with the substance here. The longer you go and we get in, tied down in the lawyering and away from the substance of the thing, I think we get ourselves off track. I'd really prefer, if you believe that, send us, you know, put together a note or something to that effect.
Perfect. I will do that. Thank you.
My presentation was based on the comments we received from the planning board, the suggestions about what we should discuss, but just ask me to skip over what you don't want to hear. That's absolutely fine.
Can I make the suggestion? If you have that printed agenda, could you hand that to the board so that they know the questions we're answering? Because the agenda came from the planning board or from the planning department to us, asking us to be prepared for these things.
We have public packets on the counter.
So let me just, no. Just because to your first comment about you didn't want us talking about the timeline, we got a letter from Christine Cheatham that laid down the things that we needed to address for you tonight. The reason that I went through the legal issues, the first seven, was because that's what Christine asked us to be prepared to speak on. I didn't do it to offend anyone.
It's not. I just don't want to focus on that because I think it gets us off track. That's all I, we want to focus on the technical merits of the thing.
Okay, so we were just following her request.
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so as you can see in the pictures, that's what they look like.
Is that exactly what they'll look like?
The equipment is exactly what they look like. Yes, sir.
So, and I'm looking at the carport canopy, which has a single...
Single column.
Sort of like front thing, I guess sort of pointed toward 125?
No, they'll be pointed towards the south, Holt Road, towards the airport, towards the, towards the town.
Okay. And the cars will park in front of that or...
They will be pointed towards the airport, sorry.
Wait, can you just point on the...
So let me just arrange you, that way is south. We're going to have the solar panels generally pointing south. We have some that are oriented perpendicular to that for the sake of construction. And then as you, in the drawings, you'll see that underlaid is the new striping for parking spaces that conform with the council, Chapter 17.
Okay.
Generally pointing that way. So this is Route 125 and we don't have any modules that point towards Route 125.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure that. And approximately how, and I'm going to call it wide, you know, from the low point to the high point is one of these canopies.
I believe it's around 30 feet. If we could just pull up the last page of the...
I just wanted to understand my question.
We got to all sit down, okay?
So 39.3 feet?
It's right on the last page. It's a...
So 40 feet?
40 feet.
It's the high point of the, when it's like this.
It's the length so that there's a car coming in on each side.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were talking the total height of the thing. If it's looking like this, what's the height of this part?
You wanted the length.
I want to know how big the canopy is.
Width, length, height.
Yeah.
Gets everything higher than I thought. So the underside, the lowest side is 11 foot 1 inches tall and it's a peak height of 15 foot 7 inches. The total length, or I should say width of it is about 40...
Sorry, that picture looks different from that picture. Is it going to look like that one or that one, the carport?
Like this one. So what we did is...
It's just straight flat thing.
Yeah. Now, there's several different types of canopies as you can see in the photos I had sent over at the different sites. This particular photo was taken and put there because that's precisely the system. It's as close to any, to our specifications as we could find. This is a different, a different type where the angles come together.
So the type you're using is flat?
Yes, ma'am.
I love the name.
It's flat, flat.
One angle.
It's a single, single angle, 7 degrees is pretty, pretty, pretty low tilt. The roof mounting system is, that's the exact system, the way that the modules would look. They're, those were 15 inches tall, I think I say in a later slide, but that's very, very low to the ground.
Can I ask you a question about this? So you said that you were going to somehow be directing it towards the airport, right? There was some angle. So is there any glare that comes off of this that's a danger for the airplanes?
There is glare that comes off and they're not a danger for the airplanes.
So the FAA doesn't have to be involved in this?
The FAA does not regulate systems like this that are not on their premise, on their parcel.
But I mean, right next to their premises? I mean, you're talking like a minute amount of distance.
I can give you the best example I can think of. I played soccer Saturday morning, my 11-year-old played soccer Saturday morning and I applied a solar field to box the airport.
Well, that's not really the question whether, I mean, there's another one there. What did they have to go through to get it there? Do you know if they had to get FAA approval?
The last time we asked this question, we were assured that the FAA, you know, had no problems with it and yet that Dunkin' Donuts on 125 sat there for a year because of the FAA.
Because of a light. Because of a light. So that's, I mean, I'm a secure safety issue.
I'm not going to raise my hand to say you're right.
I'm just, I'm curious.
So I have a, I have a whole slide just on this topic.
You gotta go, gotta go back up.
I do have a slide just on this topic that addresses the consideration, including a site map that shows the landing pathways and in a draft glare analysis that shows where and when glare could be an issue. Would it, okay, here we go. So the FAA requires glare and glint analysis for any project only located on airport property and that's per the far, the federal acquisition regulations. There are tools that are put out by the Department of Energy that show how you can analyze this. And in this particular case, what we did is we showed what the two mile approach is from the airport relative to the solar arrays, just so you can orient it, orient yourself Without getting into all the detail, it's, it's just not required for private properties, but the glare is very similar to, glare coming off solar panels is less than glare coming off your car windshield because solar panels are actually designed to absorb sunlight so that the surface is textured, so there's actually less. Glare coming off the solar panels is described by the Department of Energy as like sunlight reflecting off a body of water. So, you know, with one approach to the airport coming in over Lake Ochikawick, it's really no different than that. It's not that much different than a parking lot full of car windshields.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Jean. The next slide number five that shows the, I'm sorry, yeah, this one here, slide number four. So that's what a solar panel looks like, the front and back. It's about six feet tall, three and a half feet wide. One of the questions was about the other equipment, so the inverters and transformers. This is an example, similar size, so that, the big white box that's in the middle underneath the overhang is about six feet tall, six foot 4 inches tallish. And that's called the inverter. That's what's converting all the DC energy off the modules and putting it into the grid power. The green equipment off to the right of that are the transformers and gear, which are transforming the, stepping up the energy so it can be put into the grid.
How many of those are there?
We've proposed three pads that will house all this equipment based on the, we, I can go through the site plan again, but three.
Three. And how, again, remind me of how this connects to all the panels? Is it underground? Is it, what is the, how does the power get there?
The, so the solar panels that are up in the canopy will have wires that will come down the columns into the ground. It'll be trenched underground and it'll come up into this equipment. So what you don't see underneath that concrete slab is the wires that come up underground into those, get converted, go back down into the ground and then head over to the interconnection.
How deep are they buried?
To building code standards.
What is that?
For low, for low voltage, under the NEC, it's, I have to get you the exact number. I'm going to say four feet approximately. For the higher voltage, which, or medium voltage, excuse me, it's concrete encased. It's got different standards.
And is this low or high or medium or...
This is low and medium.
Okay. So it's at least 48 inches?
It's approximately three to four feet. I have to get the exact...
Is that at least 36 inches?
I believe it's, yeah, at least 36 inches.
Okay. I was just thinking the low voltage, when you run lights around the house, it's...
That's not the type of low voltage.
Yeah. This is probably...
This is like 110 low voltage then.
Yeah, okay.
Right. Yes, ma'am. So on the technical questions, how many modules? So there's 14,000 modules we're proposing in the canopies and about 5,100 on the rooftop. The gross area, and gross is defined as, if you were to just draw...
If you were looking at these lines around the whole array, that's just the gross area. It includes aisleways and everything. That's why the gross is so much larger than the net, but...
Circled area?
So it's all together or 16 acres? Right? 11 acres and five acres is 16 acres.
Five of which are rooftop, 11 of which are parking lot. The net module area, six and three quarters and two and a half acres of just modules. The finish, excuse me, as a percentage, you know, 5.4 percent. So of everything, this is 7% of the business opportunity zone of the main parcel, which is 125 acres. They're galvanized steel finished. The heights, as I explained earlier, 14 inches on the rooftop, which is very low, 16 feet as you saw in the plans. Tilt angles are very low tilt, almost flat, 7 degrees for the carports, 10 degrees for the rooftop and generally oriented south, southwest. and generally oriented south, southwest.
What is the reason that some of the panels in the carport area are oriented towards the west?
To be most efficient with the parking spaces underneath them. May I just pull that up?
So this is the parking canopy on the western lot. Here we go.
This one?
Yes. So I'm just going to carry that up. So this way is south. Excuse me, here's Route 125, this way is south.
Got it.
The modules over here are facing south to get maximum solar exposure.
Right.
However, there's an optimization with using the existing lawn lengths and existing.
Got it. So all of those on the.
So they can face west.
Okay, on the west side, they're all facing west.
Have you given us profiles of what it's going to look like from each of the views on these, which is what we normally get when we do site plan reviews?
Renderings?
Well, it's, no, it's profiles so that we can kind of see from each direction what it looks like.
I think we only have one in there, one section, so we can put those together. Just so I'm clear.
Exactly, I'm sorry, just so I'm clear exactly what profile.
We have a building we do, it's probably more for the ones on the ground, the carport ones in the front, where what we want to do is we want to see a profile, what it would look like from the street and from the buildings.
An elevation drawing from the street?
You want like a photo simulation? You want to see what it looks like, the trees that are there?
Well, yeah, I mean, ultimately, I mean, we typically, when we do any commercial product, we see what all the sides of the buildings are, what the profile is of the building, what it looks like as regards to the photograph.
Yeah, that's the package. It is in one of the packages.
The renderings, we have. Yeah, I mean, for example, the, so just so I'm clear, Jean, could you go to the very first, the cover of this presentation? Similar to that?
By ground level, just talking about an engineering scale.
Okay. Great, we can put that, we can produce that. Thank you, Jean. I think we're on page six if there weren't any other questions. We, so we sent out, right after the last meeting, a list of some sites that were both local, as well as some larger sites that were in New Jersey that are similar. Again, we just, we only did canopies, we didn't do roof mount or other types of solar. So all these, just say, see the attached list. I'm not sure if there were any questions or any site.
Do we have any pictures or can you give us what the list, do we have the list? Okay, what's the closest one?
Lincoln Sudbury High School.
Okay, so, so, yeah, I'm sorry.
Which presentation?
So there's a presentation called solar sites for the.
Yes.
That's what I'm talking about, we submitted that. Is that, is this what you're looking for? It's on the screen, it's right over the building.
It's like a little blur.
Let me just look at it and see.
Usually we get.
This would be one.
I have it, I have it, it's just.
So do we have, do we have a list of all the properties?
We do have a list, Jean, and we have it in chip format. We have both a list describing how many solar units are on, which types of canopy. And then we have pictures of solar sites. So I'd go to either one. One is a narrative list and one is pictures of solar canopies.
Okay.
So. Yeah. So this is like Lincoln Sudbury, Dave, this inverted type is my understanding. That's not what we are presenting here.
And there's a separate list that was written out that describes exactly of the main five or six features of these, what, how each one of these varies from what we're proposing?
So Cisco would be 1/6 the size of what you're proposing here, correct?
Where's, that's this size.
Because I thought it was 6.
I'm sorry, 1/4 of the, so the carport canopy is about 4.4 megawatts. So that's about a quarter.
Okay. This is the narrative that goes with each picture. So the Cisco there is about halfway down.
So are there any of these in the list that are anywhere close to the size of what we're talking about? So there is, there's been no in the state. This is four times as big as anything else that's been built in the state.
Are you referring specifically to carport canopies or to projects?
Projects, okay. So for carport canopies, this is, of existing projects, this is 3 point something times the largest that's operational right now.
In the United States or?
No, Massachusetts, I'm sorry.
In Massachusetts.
So very large carport canopies are installed in the leading solar states. New Jersey has been installing six, you know, large canopies like this for three to four years that they've been in service. Massachusetts policy has just started to encourage canopies. Before this, they just weren't as economically feasible as ground mount or roof mount. So there's not a lot that are constructed, that's why the list in Massachusetts is a little bit limited. But, you know, a 1 point something megawatt project is, gives you, I think, the scale that we're talking with four. It's not off by an order of magnitude.
Just 3 and 1/2 X.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so that's one thing we learned.
Did you, are there sites which are mixed use site, which have installed canopies anywhere in the country even? Because all of these are straight commercial sites. Do you have anywhere, they're residential?
I'm sure there are.
Those college campuses?
Well, that's, I wouldn't consider, I mean, students live there, but a residential where someone pays for an apartment or pays for a market rate apartment or owns a condominium, are there any? None of your examples are all commercial, basically?
Yeah, I was going for the largest.
Some is 16.
Yeah, I mean, I would remind you, we are not.
No, it's a mixed use, that's the whole.
We're only, we're only going on the business opportunity zone. We are not going in the mixed use zone or the residential zone. This application is.
I would say there certainly are, I have to go find them because I'm.
The parking canopies are put up in residential and around schools, around all different uses. And I understand from other developers that are out actively doing these that they, there's a premium for parking under these that may be realized by developers. So I would, I mean, if the question is, do these types of uses find this attractive? I say yes. I'll have to get you some. I'll have to get you some.
But you're going to have to have a lot of open space. It's not going to be, you know, in a tightly packed neighborhood that you're going to have a lot of these canopies together. You just don't have the space for it. You've got to have a large, open area in order for it to be efficient.
Right, well, let's.
That was my question, though. I'm just asking if there's any, I asked if there's any residential sites that they can give us an example of.
But it's more, is it?
Or a mixed use site.
It's more related, you know, it's partly residential, but it's partially what I'm going to call retail and commercial use. I would be shocked if any of them were in, other than a dedicated single use like a Whole Foods, which is a special play, you know, on the environment anyway, whether it's a general purpose, commercial area, if there's any. I mean, you know, theoretically speaking, you could do this at the Loop, but there's a reason why they don't do it at the Loop. Right?
Is there a reason why they haven't done it at the Loop yet?
And why they won't?
I, I, I wouldn't say that's true, but that's not my place to say what development may be happening. I am aware of malls that are actively in development with carport canopies.
Okay.
Yeah, for parking.
But I bet it's on a far smaller scale.
A carport canopy generally, to be economically viable, of 1 to 2 or more megawatts is most desirable. Developers wouldn't be doing small carport canopies. It would just be, there's an MX plus B equation to it, it just doesn't make sense at very small scale. A nice, another nice, easy one to see, the Danvers Port Yacht Club. I mean, that's a system that sits on two columns, so it's got a span that's much wider than the 40 or so feet that we're proposing that'll go over just a double row of parking spots. That's a beautiful system, right when you drive into the Danvers Port Yacht Club. Same with Endicott College, that's a nice, easy one to visit if you wanted to drive out there and see it. Sure, and, yeah, well, I could go through all of these, but I'd rather answer your questions.
A few questions. Can you tell me, is the entire underlying zoning of the entire parcel i-to? Or is it, it's split up?
The whole thing is i-to.
The whole thing is i-to. Okay, can you tell me where the dividing lines for the three sub-districts are?
Sir, this is approximate, the north, so this is the north entrance where there's a flashing yellow light and this is the south entrance where it's a, the gas station's right there. So the residential parcel and the residential district is everything to the north side of this road. The mixed use area is actually pretty well laid out by the rendering here. It's just this strip, it's about 10 acres. The business opportunity zone is everything else plus the whole road parcel. Also, all the way down to Pol Road.
So you're only in the one district?
So what we had previously submitted was to have solar in the north parking lot. This is the business development zone right here, so two weeks ago, we removed this sliver and relocated it, but we still have a section in the north parcel right outside the building. Excuse me, in the north parking lot, right outside the building.
So these are modified plans? Have you given us those plans?
Yes, they were submitted just prior to the last meeting, they're dated August 28.
Okay.
And the Lincoln Sudbury High School, that was just completed in late spring, I think. So they haven't had any experience with the weather. What about Cisco? Do you know when that was completed?
That was just turned on this summer.
So we don't have anybody who had experience with snow over the winter.
Oh, they're, so the sites in, so for example, the sites in New Jersey were, some of the large sites that I listed there were installed when they had the heavy snow year two years ago and managed to deal with it fine. The Endicott College system was in service this year. The Boston Properties system was in service. Anecdotally, when there was 30, when there was 3 feet of snow on the ground, we never saw more than 14 inches on top of the Boston Properties system. Snow just doesn't accumulate on top of these like it does in other areas.
What's the reason?
It drifts off. It drifts off.
Does it slide down the 7%?
No. So the intent, when you're putting up carport canopies, is to make sure snow only comes off when you want it to come off, or it comes off as water. You never want snow to fall off. So the Y configurations are one way of doing it. What we proposed is very commonly done, which is put snow guards on the lower side of the modules. And at 7 degrees, my experience is, nothing really slides off of 7 degrees with these modules because there's gaps in there. Once you get above 20 degrees, snow will slide off of something more than 20 degrees. But even at 10 degrees, it's, there's very little sliding.
I already went through about three pages.
I did have one slide at the, in the first presentation that.
Studies and the actual experience somebody's written about? Any complaints, lawsuits for people?
There were sites in New York that, I'm sure you know about, said they had put up sliding snow signs. On all the canopies and cars were getting crushed from the snow and ice sliding off of them, so. And those were single angle canopies. And they did not have snow guards on them, though. So you are planning on installing snow guards on all of them?
Yes.
What would happen if somebody?
Had a car parked underneath there and the snow came down and crushed their convertible top? Who's responsible under?
Their car would be under the canopy sort of came off.
When they're backing out.
Yeah.
I'm trying to find out, who would be responsible if the stuff came down and damaged the car?
I would hate to speculate, but my guess is the insurance company.
Just like if snow fell, I mean, I saw a couple of stories this winter where snow came sliding off of people's roofs and came through their cars as they were backing out of their garages. I would think it would be no different than that.
I guess the question is, who's insurance company he's asking? Who's going to own this?
The property owner.
The property owner. So Ozzy.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's the question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So the property owner would understand that.
Yeah, okay.
So let me ask a few other questions. The, on the, the one that's in the front closest to 125, how far is it from the end of the right away?
From, to the right away on Route 125?
To.
Just over 420 feet.
So that's 420 feet.
Okay. And just to put it in perspective, it's 420 feet, there's grass, a first row of trees, and actually a second row of trees, large trees and screen.
That's currently parking lot under that blue block.
How far is the, 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 the street?
Sorry.
That's currently parking lot?
Yeah, it was, the discussion, so when this was, we intentionally overlaid this over the vision for the 40R. This is not the actual.
What's the scale of one that, do we have plans anywhere?
There's actually a smaller parking lot here, there's a grass area, so the can. This is just for.
I mean, I'm trying to.
Did you show us that? Yeah, can I show you that on the plans? That'll make more sense. So we brought six extra sets of plans to the extent that anyone can. So here's where the gas station is right here. Come in the light, there's a grassy area, there's trees and screen right here. 30-foot trees and screen. There's a parking lot here, then a garage shed, another grass area where there's.
Yeah, I want to get into that a little bit later. I want to answer just a quick. I want to answer just a question of it intuitively doesn't seem like, what's the scale on that? Uh, this plan, is it one inch forty or is it something different?
Okay.
Do you guys, you guys are the engineers. Come on, help, help him out. We've got to get answers to these questions.
These distances provided over here for the carports, scale four to the whole group.
One inch is two, that's on that, okay. One inch is two hundred, okay.
I think the others were...
That's not...
Right there.
We want to go seven.
That's scale of the...
Two, five.
There you go. Check that rooftop.
Seven.
There's no canopies in the front of the building.
It's here. There's really no canopies.
On 125.
There's no canopies there.
Along 125, just...
Okay. One discussion. Let's, uh, we're, we're getting out of control here. Remember, people are watching this on TV.
Building shut down from the street is four twenty-two, and everything is further down from the building.
Okay. Okay. So then the question becomes, how close on this side is the, uh, the canopy ones, the edge of the ca, that one, yeah, from the edge of the district for the mixed use? And from the roadway there?
We, we do have that drawn on the... We just have to find that.
Yeah. Looks like it's a little over four hundred.
What's that?
A little over four hundred.
No, it's from the one on the...
It is about twenty-five. It is about twenty-five feet from the edge of the last canopy in the business opportunity zone to the beginning edge of the mixed use zone. And then it is an additional four hundred feet from the edge of the mixed use zone to the roadway.
To 125?
No, to the roadway in between the residential zone and the mixed use zone.
Right, okay. No, that's okay.
Okay.
What I wanted to know is there's actually, it looks like there's a roadway... I was using the term, not that one, go to your left, there. That's twenty, that is, yeah, it's an entrance. So that would be probably the entrance into the mixed use zone. So you're talking about having the canopies twenty-five feet away from the edge of the, that's all, I'm just trying to find out the distance, that's...
When you drive by there now and there's the curb cut, that's the, the entrance?
That's what, yeah, but that's not what I'm talking about.
This would be a secondary...
That's, I just want to know what it is.
Correct.
So, and it is twenty-five feet away from the edge of the mixed use zone. That's all, all I wanted to know. I don't want to steal your pen. Okay. So we got, uh, okay, big, big, big. And on the other side, uh, I know that thing in orange is not built yet, but that would be, if you were to build another building there, roughly how far away from that building would be the edge of the, uh...
I'm trying to ask a question.
You, you, I'm just trying to get some idea of where that fits in in regards to future...
Maybe twenty-five feet.
Okay.
It'd be, it'd be similar types of standoffs, um, for, for access road.
Okay. John, can I ask a question? I don't want to interrupt you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you please explain to me the color coding on that, uh...
Yes.
Picture?
Yes.
Start with what the blue means.
Blue is solar power. Blue is solar power. Um, if it's got a black frame, that means it's put on the roof of the existing building, and, and that's where it's going.
That's where it is.
So here's why I'm asking this. I think that there, I think that this, when viewed from a distance, is a little, uh, deceiving.
Confusing.
Or confusing, because all of the blue are solar panels, but not all of the blue are solar panel carports.
Yes.
And the way it's drawn, it makes it look like there's carports in front of the building, and there isn't.
There's, there's no carports.
And it's that, so point to that long blue one in front of the building.
It's, it's actually a hill that...
I, I, I know that. I'm just trying to remove what may be ambiguity.
All right.
So that line, that blue right there is a rooftop array. Correct?
Correct.
Good. Now, could you please point to all of the blue ones that are ground-level carports?
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
You should have different colors.
That's actually the only color coding that I needed you to explain.
It is surrounded and red is...
Very difficult to see from where we're sitting.
Different colors. Make them...
The orange buildings are all... To be, but not on this plan?
These, the orange building, this is, this is a rent, correct? Not too bad. This is, this is a, um, this was a concept from 2007.
So the idea is to show that the 40R project could still fit on the property with this solar layout. So those are...
If you believe that.
If you, if you like that layout, I mean, yeah.
Well, the, which is sort of one of the points of what we're looking at is that when you put this in there, it precludes...
Yeah.
A lot of other things. Uh, that which is...
Yes.
Yeah.
Good. I'm on the same.
Yeah.
Now, wait a second. Ah, possible.
So this is the nine-one presentation that was...
Gotcha. This is better.
And the nine-one presentation had a blue figure surrounded by red in front of the building. Yeah, I know, I'm looking up behind you.
Oh, right there.
And that's no longer there.
No, that, those are possible in, in the event that the, um, the board wanted to discuss. There, there, you could put over fourteen megawatts on this site. The question's, where do you put the best six?
Right. So I'm just trying to give clarity on...
The worst, yeah.
Right now, right now, there's no carport solar panels in front of the building.
Correct.
Thank you.
This, this is the plan. The reason that we did that was to show the board. If the board said, hey, why wouldn't you put some on the ground? Why wouldn't you do walk car? Why are you doing walk car? Why wouldn't you do different things? We wanted the board to be able to understand that we looked at fourteen megawatts worth of footprint, and of those fourteen megawatts worth of footprint, this is the six megawatts that we came up with, that we felt was the best layout. And I believe, you know, that was the kind of show the board, that we explored the entire site.
Uh, these, oh, go ahead.
Can I just say, so I just want to be clear. When we're, when we're making a decision on this, there's going to be a set location. Your, these aren't going to be possible locations.
This is it.
This is it?
The, the only one that's the possible is to show, again, we want to show you we looked at everything.
All right.
Okay.
So this was last meeting presentation, and I'm just showing that...
It was entertained in the front at one point.
Thank you. That was very helpful.
Uh, gee, yeah, uh, the plans that we, we have these extra copies of plans. Have all town boards gotten them?
They have not. So again, last week's, two weeks ago, we were waiting for the ZDA decision to come in.
Because we weren't sure, we were waiting for the ZDA. So the normal process that it says in the thing that takes sixty days is...
All boards plus the fire and chief and the police chief.
Has not started yet.
Right. It has not started, and I do not have enough copies. I communicated with Dan that if the direction was to send these to all other boards...
I hear about the creepies, do you?
Well, there's a lot more people than that.
Tell us how many more you need, and we'll get them.
Because each individual board member...
The, the, the point is that you, in the, under the bylaw, it's a sixty-day period for that review process to occur. And that's, I'm just making that observation while holding it...
Under the bylaw, that is the first sixty days from the date of the application.
Well, it's, it's a sixty-day review period. I, I'm not even going to argue with it any further. I'm just going to remark that that's the case, and they have not gotten them yet. So this is, uh, that due diligence is just starting up now. So, um, the concom, I mean, the, uh, the comments from our consultant, um, you just got them, we just got them, so you can't respond to them. How and when are you going to respond to them?
We are going to reach out to them, uh, to the consultant tomorrow as to stormwater. We're going to review the report. We're going to discuss points where we think we have differences of opinion. We will then provide any response in writing, and then we will await that peer review expert to comment back. We would hope that they would comment back in writing, and to the extent that there's any point that we have a disagreement with their opinion, we would ask that she be present at the next hearing.
Well, again, I mean, just judging from what the thing says and judging from our normal experience with projects of this complexity, uh, there's a lot of work to be done. There, there's some very substantive points, because basically you haven't given us any drainage analysis.
So you think that she jumped to a conclusion, which was that this was also going to conservation? And in actuality, this does not trigger conservation?
It's...
Okay. Let me interject there. So in the narrative submitted with the application was this clause here stating that there was a notice of intent application in '06, and, and ANRAD was done, and an order of conditions issued, they were to expire, if I remember, April 27th of 2015. So those have in fact expired. So Jen Hughes had, had provided comment, I just saw that. She, um, said they are no longer valid. And so these rear canopies in this revised set of plans, um, is located just outside of riverfront and wetlands, one of which of the wetlands, it is noted on the plan, if I remember right, that it is not jurisdictional wetland. So I think Jennifer would like to evaluate that. Um, so this, this ANRAD plan is stated right in their narrative, is no longer valid. So whether they want to redeline it or not, I don't know that at this point, but she has provided a comment that is no longer valid. And it's also stated here. So I don't know if you want to speak to that. I, I had alerted Dan to this as well.
Yep. For the record, Rick Wade from Meridian Associates. I'm a principal with the firm, a PE. Um, just as a little history, we've sat down with Jennifer a couple of times on this. The area to the south that we're showing as riverfront area may or may not be riverfront. That is something that, that is debatable, but the area that is in question there is a very narrow drainage ditch, and, um, we designed the project to stay well outside of the two-hundred-foot riverfront area. So even if that's off by a foot or two, or three or four feet, we're still not in that area. Outside of that ditch is parking lot. To the other area that Jean just spoke about, behind the building, on the ANRAD plan that she was mentioning that did expire, the wetlands back there are man-made constructed drainage facilities that were noted on the plan as non-jurisdictional. They're shown accurately by survey, where over a hundred feet from both of those, even if they were jurisdictional, um, wetlands, were not within one hundred feet of those. So we're very clearly convinced ourselves that we're not within any jurisdictional wetlands on this project.
So the ones not jurisdictional, if I understand correct, the very dark line on this, just to the west of that, is a dashed black line? And that line is what, my understanding is, it's, maybe not on this page, but it's deemed not jurisdictional wetland there.
Correct.
And then the riverfront, as you can see, and the one-hundred-foot buffer.
Correct.
All those lines were on in ANRAD at one point in time.
Correct. And as I stated, using that diagram, that's a good one, that we're outside the two-hundred-foot river zone, riverfront zone to a very narrow drainage channel that's actually, actually correctly shown from an aerial survey. Um, so it's, you know, even if that line were off five feet, we're still outside the two-hundred-foot riverfront area. And to the, to the west, I guess it would be, those are man-made drainage facilities that were listed as non-jurisdictional.
Okay. And I'm just suggesting that I think Jennifer would like to weigh in on that, now that these plans are revised.
I would agree with that.
I think it's a slam dunk, and you should be able to convince her pretty easily.
I would agree with that.
So, uh, but getting back to the point is that there's a fair number of issues related to drainage in that letter, and I think it's, this is just based on a preliminary assessment. There may be more comments that come up. It's important that you address them fairly quickly and, uh, substantively, because if any of them are really material, you may have to do a fair amount of work, or you may even have to redesign something. I have no idea, but, you know, that's, you need to satisfy her.
Thank you.
So...
Have you requested any waivers? I don't see any waivers on the cover sheet. I may be missing it in the plans.
We've not requested any waivers.
Okay. So where's the rest of the plans then? Landscaping plans, you need buffers, you need the, Oz God clearly says with parking, you need to have planting areas and spacing and all that stuff.
We're not constructing, you park these, those are not applicable. We don't need a waiver, they're just not applicable.
You're, you're adding buildings.
We're not adding buildings.
Your application says they're buildings. And these would be considered buildings under the definition of the bylaw.
Well, the, uh, so, have you submitted full landscape plans?
No. They submitted comments for each of the sections and for lands...
But no, uh, no landscape plan?
No. For landscaping, um, they just commented that they have screening from 125 and that the canopies are approximately four hundred and twenty feet setback, and it did not attach...
So there's no plan?
No landscaping.
Like we've had in every site plan review we've ever had?
No lighting plan, no landscape plan, no interior parking lot landscape plan to screen from other interior sites or out posse buildings.
No, no drainage analysis?
No drainage analysis.
Signage, traffic flow within the site.
Signage is shown on attached drawings and submitted, which are the roadway signage that exists today.
And you're saying you don't, you don't think you need any waivers?
No, we think they're not applicable, because we're not touching anything. It's an existing parking lot, we're just adding pieces of what...
No, but I'd say, that's not the question I asked. You're responding to her, Lynn's comments, uh, but just in general, you don't think you need any waivers. What about, uh, size of the project?
John?
So can I just get to Lynn's? Do you mind if I make a comment about Lynn's point about the building? And I, I, I don't want to get into a debate over definitions, but just reading from the bylaw, "Building: A structure having a roof, supported by columns or walls, for the shelter support or enclosure of persons, animals, or property." So, I mean, just, again, I'm, I'm not the town attorney here, but I think Lynn may have a point.
Well, any further, all the, all the landscaping under the section called parking lot landscaping talks about landscaping required for the parking lot.
Well, that would be act like, well, if we were building a parking lot, but we're not building a parking lot, which is why we stated not applicable.
So what about the size?
Four-point-four megawatt canopies. I, I don't understand.
The question, I'm sorry.
There's a, a provision, one of the provisions is you can't have a project more than one-hundred-fifty-thousand square feet.
You don't have that space, or not, not by...
No, that's not what it says.
I, I just, may I just pull that up?
Well, I mean, right now, I think that's something that you have to address. I think you do require waivers. I think it's related to the building and the... You don't have that space or not, 95?
No, that's not what it says. Well, I mean, right now, I think that's something that you have to address. I think you do require waivers. I think it's related to the building and related to the size of the project. Plus, if you're not going to give us drainage analysis and you're not going to give us landscaping plans, you need waivers for that too.
Lighting.
Lighting and-
I think there also probably needs to be some signage on the transformers. I don't think I saw any safety signage on any of the sheets. Traffic flow, driveway markings, stop signs.
Number three on page 195. Permitted uses in the business development shall not exceed 150,000 square feet per development
Well, I think these are all stuff you guys got to address for next time, so.
Yes.
Members of, I think we probably, Pete, do you have any more questions that you wanted to ask?
No.
I have one. I have a concern with the fact that you were talking about digging up trenches for connecting the systems or whatever, and excuse my non-technical lingo, but that you're not going to make any repairs to the parking lot. So I think that that-
We're not making repairs.
Well, that's, okay.
Correct those, yes.
I want that, I would like that addressed. Because according to what our expert thought, that there wouldn't be any repairs to the parking lot. So I just want that-
The distinction is between repairs versus repaving and reconstructing the entire parking lot.
Well, the point is, we'll go out and take a look at, if we think the parking lot is in crappy order, we're going to ask you to fix it.
And you're going to make it worse.
Fix it before you do this thing, because once you put these things up, you'll never be able to do anything to it.
That's my only point.
And I think we addressed that on slide 13.
I don't think we have to go into that because I think our expert has a question about it, so I think-
Okay, thank you.
Dave, do you have any more questions?
I think that's a real serious one. I would like, if you have someone who has experience with how snow guards work.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
If you have somebody that we can talk to, read about, about how snow guards work.
Yes.
In a large facility such as what we're going to have here. I mean, one of the concerns, I think, is that it's hard to identify anything that's similar to what you're proposing to put up here. And that gives people concerns. I mean, frankly, I saw two sites. I think these things are reasonably attractive. They don't appear to be a nuisance. I think we've got, you've got to conform to weather requirements of the plan there.
Sure. So we can provide some more information about snow guards, but in summary, so snow guards are a very established business, typically used on roofs, not for solar. We started installing them on solar four or five years ago, became commonplace, especially, I know the inspector right now has asked local inspections in town to, if they didn't install snow guards, to put them up. So the science behind snow guards is pretty well understood. I know that the building inspector will be looking closely at that. So we will certainly, it's a best practice. Like I said, you don't want snow to come off unless you want it to.
The longest-
I don't know whether, you know, this sounds like we're being bureaucratic, but I think that things that have been raised are valid, valid questions. And we would normally have these when it came along.
These are excellent questions. I mean that, when I put the first presentation together, I came up a list of the questions. I've been in solar for eight or nine years, and everybody asks these same questions. These are excellent questions. I'm very happy to explain them. It's more of the interest of time.
Do they ask about landscaping? Traffic flow? Because if you're not going to have some landscaping about in the middle of that, where that panel is, people are going to go, you know, driving right through these things.
Okay, yes, yes, they will. Yes, and they do now. And they, they'll cut through parking lots now, I guess.
Building, what's the longest power cord? The length?
The longest length?
I think 600.
That sounds right.
Okay. I think you're also, 210 feet is our max without an articulation in, under OSGOD. And also pedestrian circulation, I think you're going to have to address. And do we have an O and M plan for when a panel breaks because there are hazardous materials in there? Have you guys submitted the O and M plan yet?
No.
Okay, so I think we're going to need an O and M plan.
Specifically addressing the, replacing a module?
Well, I believe there's hazardous materials in the, there's no hazardous materials, so someone's in their background shaking your head, their head, but-
I once said solar panels didn't have any emissions.
No, no, they're in an intact panel, but I believe that in, if they break, there is some lead inside the, you want to speak on this? Okay, oh, you're shaking your head, so. That there are some hazardous materials within the interior of the panel, so if they break.
So if we could go, please, to the last slide, Jean, of the first presentation where I addressed the characterization of the modules?
The 9-1 slide?
The 9-1, please, yeah. The government certification stating that they're non-hazardous. You know, as to any other studies, I can't say which study it-
No, but the point of being-
Toxicity-
She's asking a different question. Is if something breaks or is destroyed or something, would it's planned to maintain it and fix it and so forth?
Sure.
I mean, there's a lot of things that in their contemplated use are not hazardous, but if something goes awry, it may create a problem.
Absolutely. So modules get replaced or removed and replaced with similar in kind, if that happens during ordinary O and M. That's just how the industry works. There'll be an O and M contractor or some group that maintains these. It's a power plant, it's got to make energy to make it pencil. So it's very actively done. But again, I just wanted to say, you know, with respect to, is it hazardous? Based on the Federal Resource Conservation Recovery Act, this, the toxicity characteristic leach procedure test, or it's based on that, it's classified as non-hazardous and it's not regulated by R-C-R-A alphabet soup.
So it's standard disposal of the panel? You can throw it in any standard dump site?
No, we recycle, you recycle.
Well, yeah, I understand you can recycle, but there's no, there's nothing in there that requires special disposal?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, Annie?
My questions are all sort of addressed by all of you, which was, on a first reading, since I'm a new member of the board of the OSGOD, it jumps out at me that it's intended to be a mixed-use area. And everything that we've seen and looked at shows it as very industrial-looking, let's say Cisco parking lot and these big huge uses. And all of these bylaws that we mentioned, the lighting and the landscaping and whatnot, are the key things to at least make it somewhat usable in a mixed-use space, in my opinion. So to say that they're not relevant is just hard for me to see how they're not relevant. So my questions are all around what we could do there.
So, I think you, there's a lot of work in front of you at this for me. We're, we will hold it over to our next meeting. I will tell you that there's no way in the world we're ever going to get done at our next meeting. And we're not, given that we won't hear it till that night, answers a lot of these questions. If you don't extend this further, it's going to put us in an awkward position. If, you know, that's your call about what you want to do, but, you know, you're going to, we're going to need at least one more meeting, probably two, to get through this, so.
Would it be possible to schedule a meeting on Tuesday, the 29th of September?
Need an extra meeting?
Yes.
I have another one.
Yeah, I don't have our things in front of us, but, you know, we will, we will kind of, we don't normally do that, but we would consider it, but, you know, we're just staying under our normal circumstances. There's way too much stuff here that is just not going to get done by our next meeting in October, so. But you have a lot of stuff in front of you, so we'll, we'll let you know. Everybody's got to check their schedule and everything to see if they're even going to be around that week, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Just so you know, both Laura and you have missed one meeting. Great, that I don't think any evidence was heard at either. Both Laura and yourself have missed one meeting. I don't think any evidence had been heard at either one, so it was a request to continue. John, the night you were here, I don't think there was even a quorum, the night you missed, so they just motioned to continue the public hearing without hearing any evidence. And if Laura was not to be available, if you were to go with the September 29th, there was no matters heard, so.
Yeah.
Just to keep, just to be aware, everybody else has been here every other meeting.
Okay.
Could we take two minutes and just go through a list of the things that you would like us to address for the next meeting so that we don't get to the next meeting and then find out that we missed something? Would it be possible to take five minutes to recap?
I mean, yeah, but you're, what you've done, what you've done is you subtly turned the thing down and said, if we don't tell you something right this second and it's not on the list, we can't ask that question. And that's not the case.
With the caveat that you obviously, as long as the public hearing is still open, can ask whatever questions you have. I don't want to intentionally miss anything. I want to be as complete, and, I mean, we've all worked very hard since the last meeting and, you know, we thank you for getting the peer review consultant lined up quickly. We got her materials, I think, within three hours of her being hired. I know she commented back immediately about needing additional assistance and you guys went and got them lined up. We want to keep this moving as promptly as we can. We want to address as many questions as you have. Even if we took five minutes now, maybe it will help us at the next meeting so that we didn't miss something that was important.
Wouldn't the best way to do that for you to review the tapes? Because I'm going to have a hard time remembering all the stuff we brought up here, but, you know, that's the nice thing about us taping, you know, recording these.
That's actually an excellent suggestion.
Yeah, because you can get to them, right, on the internet?
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the things, so after the last hearing, we did watch the tapes, we then came up with a list. And interestingly enough, the list that we then got from Christine had a number of different things that weren't on the list that we got from watching the hearing. So, you know, again, if we took five minutes and recap, would it-
I think you need to go through the bylaw and see what the, you know, all those plans that are part of plan approval that we don't have yet. I mean-
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of things that's, you know, I mean, if you want, this is not going to be all-inclusive, but we said we need sufficient copies of the plan to give all the town boards. And the town boards may have questions that come up. I don't know if there's anything in the, in the package that does the sub-district lines, but I think you've got something that lays out the plan as regards the sub-district lines. You've got to deal with all the drainage questions, you've got to deal with the con-comp questions, you've got to deal with the structural review questions.
Civil engineer.
Civil engineer, or the areas where we think the, you haven't complied with all of the filing requirements related to, you know, looking at the landscaping, the lighting, the interior circulation. It's all the criteria under the bylaw, you know, all those things.
Waivers, what, do they need waivers?
Waivers, I mean-
All those things, I think you, you know, rather than just saying it's not applicable, you should give a statement and then just ask for a waiver because it's not applicable.
You still want profiles from each direction, right?
Yeah, profiles, yeah.
You want it from every direction, like from wheel elevator or-
Really, the one, the one in the front, the two in the front that are on the ground, the one that's closest to 125 and the one, one, that one?
Or east and west, a perspective from here?
Well, the perspective from, really, three sides there. You don't need the back. You need the side perspective, the front perspective, and the perspective related to the building.
On this side, you want it off of, off of the road, though. You don't want it from a bar or joint.
No, I want the-
I mean, this is our problem.
No, that's your, no, I don't want that. I want the-
You want this angle here.
I want the building, or, you know, the construction profile of what the thing is going to look like on the-
So here, here, and here?
Well, it's, yeah, but you're doing a direct angle. You don't do it at a 45 to the building.
So you want it from the, from the side here looking at?
Correct.
Basically, we want to see this, 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 this less important because it's in the back, this, this, this. Yeah, we don't need these two, it's the front and back.
Oh, I see, so you want a perspective on this and on this?
Those are the two.
I got you.
Four-side views, you know, the front, back and both sides.
Of this and that.
And looking at it from 125, what did you say?
Yeah, so from this one, from 125, from the south, from the north, and even from behind. But what you're saying is because these are behind these two, don't worry about from the building back, but you want to see this one and this one from all four sides. Okay, I got you.
Now, just, the fire department will want to make sure that they can get a truck, ladder truck in there, turn it around.
They're on the list.
They're on the list.
I think you want to double check your, that you don't need an O and M plan, because I really find it hard to believe that when you're generating, that these don't have lead solder in the panels, that if the panel breaks, that the lead couldn't leach into the water supply?
The modules are ROHS, so they're-
Lead-free solder.
Lead-free, and there's no copper in them either? Has to be, there almost has to be a mineral in there which would leach in if the panel breaks. I'm just telling you that, you know, because, don't forget, our consultant has had problems with, she doesn't allow copper on it because of the problems with copper leaching. You know, so I would think there has to be a metal in there with the panel break, so.
Okay.
How to properly dispose of it, how you're going to take it out of operation, how you're going to, you know, you probably should look at that, so.
Yes, ma'am.
I think it has to have copper or lead, one of the other.
I'm going to find the copper or lead, I will find it.
Or something else.
Yes, understood. We understand.
I believe there is.
We understand.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, what next?
Okay, moving right along.
Okay, so 777 Great Pond Road, I know this has been on, I think, a couple of agendas previous. And at the last meeting, you requested that the applicant come in. So 777 Great Pond Road is just, if you're coming from the golf course, just beyond Bridle Path. There was some clearing- previous, and at the last meeting, you requested that the applicant come in. So 777 Great Pond Road is just, if you're coming from the golf course, just beyond Bridle Path. There was some clearing done recently. They actually cut down vegetation. They have not yet removed the vegetation. My understanding is someone from conservation noticed it. The work has stopped since then. So there is a single-family home with a pool. There had been a significant amount of vegetation, most of which has been cut at this point. And as you can see, there's wetlands pretty much all around to the rear and sides of this property. So the applicant is actually before conservation at this point, requesting an order of conditions. Conservation has held off because technically, if planning does require anything, conservation cannot issue until planning is at least filed with. The work that has been done to date has been in the non-discharge zone, so outside of the non-disturbance. Technically, it's not construction. You cannot remove vegetation in the non-disturbance, but because there's going to be future work, I just thought it was worth having Greg Hockbuth here from William and Sparges. He's the applicant's engineer. And this plan is actually, has been submitted to conservation, so you can see, again, where the wetlands were, were to the rear of this lot and the sides. The 200-foot riverfront line, you can see there, runs here, and the vegetation that was cut is where these circles are, and the pool is between those two. Okay?
I also have a question. There's, there's, there's two, like, wetland areas here, one in this drawing, one kind of below, and one on the above right. So where's the line for the, for the other one?
Okay, so this is the 100-foot from the lower one, and the 100-foot is the separation between non-disturbance and non-discharge.
Okay.
So everything beyond that is non-discharge.
Okay.
And then, Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but.
Yeah, it's a little deceiving, because it's a brineal stream.
At the base of the hill, too, so there's mean annual high water associated with the stream, and there's bordering vegetated wetlands. So in most cases, the line's the same, because it's a well-defined channel, but it does, the wetlands do rise above the stream, so we have the 100-foot wetland buffer zone, and then the 200-foot riverfront area. There's two jurisdictional resource areas on top of the, the planning board setbacks from the, the resource area. When we first got the call from Mr. Ribbitson, I got a call from Heidi first, warning me that he was going to call. Very high-profile spot. He wasn't trying to get away with anything. He just didn't understand the rules and regulations. And if you stand in his backyard, it's not clear that there's even wetlands behind his house. It drops down, there's a driveway, then there's woods, and then the wetlands. We were hired to do a survey and a resource area delineation, and we assumed we'd be filing a watershed special permit application as well. After we did the survey, it, and we learned when the house was built, and we put the plan together, it became clear that, that there was no work done in the no- disturb zone. The work is, is definitely in the non-discharge zone. The trees that were removed, there's probably about a dozen and a half of them. You can see them now, they're all still just, just piled up. He stopped work, ceased and desist, and hasn't done anything since conservation got involved. Part of the project also involves, is the high point of the lot, you can see there's a hill.
There's a hill here, and then the concrete was kind of spread out.
They want to remove the pool. The pool hasn't been used in probably about five years. The patio will be coming up, and he's, he's contracted with Peter Breen to do all the work all at once. Pool removal, patio removal, stump removal, and at the same time, do some grading to level out the lot and put in lawn. He knows he can't use fertilizers because of the non-discharge requirements. We're proposing erosion controls. We went to the first conservation commission meeting, they seemed satisfied. They said we didn't have to come to the second one. They drafted an order. But I got a call from, from Jennifer Hughes, and she said, Greg, what do you want to do? I said, well, let's just keep it open until we have a chance to address the planning board.
And to be honest, I didn't call Greg, I didn't get my arms around this till, I think, Monday, when I called Greg to say, wait a minute, I just finished over the weekend watching the meeting, and they did want you to come before us. And he was more than accommodating, he's.
Yeah, and thanks for squeezing us on.
Well, you'd have to enjoy the festival.
Greg, I'm not sure if you spoke to this yet, but my understanding is also is about 600 cubic yards of material that will be hauled from the site?
Yeah, the plan's a little deceiving. I mean, it is a small hill, but it's a lot of, lot of material that's going to be, be leaving the site. I guess, if anything, that might be a good thing. It's, it's lessening the slope that would eventually drain down to the wetland. The same amount of water is going to land here that's landing there now, but when you go from woods to lawn, it's, it's a little different.
What, what is our jurisdiction on this effetti?
So Lynn probably has it open right now.
Non-discharge is best management practices, so we can state that they have to use erosion control, it already prohibits fertilizers, you know, so basically.
But there's no permit required.
Doesn't require a special permit, but it gives us, we can put in the standard, you know, things that they have to, you know, use erosion control. If it happens to be within conservation jurisdiction also, but if it wasn't, we have.
So it's not technically a waiver, but if we were to be a building permit, I could, in the narrative, you know, specify a couple of site visits.
But they don't, they don't need a watershed special permit. They just need to follow best practices.
Right.
As set by the planning board.
Right.
So the, the question then, I guess, would be that is there anything beyond what the Concom has recommended that we would like to see here?
I have not seen the order of conditions. I don't know that she's drafted it yet. They would certainly have erosion control, which we'd want in place. Do you know if she's going to require monitoring?
Yeah, it will require the standard monitoring until the site's stable, but one thing they're not addressing is, most of this work is outside of the jurisdiction, so trucks coming and going, it may make sense to put some riprap that they drive over, or something to clean their tires. Something like, would be required from a NIPD's stormwater pollution prevention plan, maybe just minor stuff, not a full-fledged prevention plan, but.
I mean, because if, if, if it doesn't involve a watershed special permit, and it doesn't involve, like, one of those, you know, what is it, the state, the, the one we have for the, you know, some, it triggers a drainage permit?
Oh, the NIPD's permit?
Yeah, or one of those. What is the one? I forget under our bylaw that we do, but if, if you lace up an awful lot of area.
Right, over an acre, it's not that.
Yeah.
So the land, it's a land disturbance permit? Is that the one?
Yeah, or something like that. But I mean, even was, how many cubic?
We did some rough calcs, and what was it? It was, I emailed it to Jennifer. Because the commission asked, too.
And is it earth removal section?
Yeah, well, that's what I was wondering about.
I want to say section five, maybe?
Yeah, section five. How much are you, cubic yards?
Did you have that number, Jean?
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
One question, you mentioned like the age of the house. Do you have the lot creation date?
Yeah, it was, it was re-subdivided.
What year?
And it was 1990.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Greg, I have an email from you, and it's approximately 600 cubic yards will be removed from the site, so that was from you to Jennifer.
Yep.
So it's less than 1,000, which is the thing that triggers.
That's correct, the earth removal.
Yeah.
And that was a quick calc, but plus or minus 50 cubic yards, I think.
Right, you're not talking 1,000, you're pretty far off of 1,000. So I don't know, it's everybody's pleasure. Would they like to see something beyond what conservation is going to do and what Jean recommends in terms of best practices?
Best management practices, I think, unless I'm missing something?
I can document it in a memo, and I can put on, you know, on file that it needs to be adhered to.
Who's the monitor going to work with?
I'm hoping it's going to be me. It's, the conservation commission requires a professional wetland scientist, and based on our relationship with the applicants, I, I do a lot of monitoring in town, so I'm pretty sure the commission will allow it.
So we would request you sign our independent monitoring form, which pretty much states that you're working for the planning board, and we'll respond accordingly.
All right. So conservation requires weekly monitoring, and after rain events of more than a half inch within 24 hours, they require photos and a report every week. What I typically do on a site like this is I'll look at the forecast for the week. If they're predicting rain on Wednesday, I'll wait till after Wednesday to do that week's inspection.
So when they did the clearing, was there any? Was it just cutting, or was there any earth moving when they cleared?
It was just cutting, and the homeowner did it all himself.
Okay.
Which is pretty amazing, if you've driven by and seen all the trees, it's, he rented a lift, and he leaned it up against the tree and, and cut them all by hand. The stumps are all intact.
Okay, because they should, if, if they were, you should advise them if they were to pull the stumps out, that that would still, even though it's in the non-discharge and it doesn't require a watershed special permit, it's still required, would require best management practice, which is erosion control. So if he decides to pull the stumps on his own at a different time later on, or do anything, if you want to make sure he realizes that he can't go pull those stumps on his own and, or anything like that, in any other areas.
You said that they had contracted with Breen.
Yeah.
To pull the stumps.
For this item, but in the future, I'm saying, just.
Oh, yeah.
They've learned a lot for this project, and I know they're watching at home, so.
Okay, because I mean, we're trying to work on an informational piece, but even though it doesn't, that did not trigger a watershed special permit, the fee filing, it did trigger, you know, that they have to use, you know, make sure there's no runoff or anything like that, so.
Yeah, I'll reiterate that, too.
I'm sorry, Don, I did have one other, I didn't want to interrupt.
Go ahead.
So you mentioned they are aware of the fertilizer.
They are.
Issue, and so I guess my question is, when this transitions, or it has, from forested to lawn, that that fertilizer issue is more important tomorrow than it was yesterday?
Right.
So going forward, if they were to sell, how would the new owners know that that property has fertilizer concerns?
It's a great question. The areas within the riverfront area, conservation's jurisdiction, there'll be a continuing condition in that order of conditions that will survive the issuance of a certificate of compliance, but for the areas outside of conservation, there'll, there'll be nothing in place to alert a future property owner.
So I guess my only concern, and I need help with the remedy here, but it is transitioning into a lawn, and more susceptible to fertilizer drainage into the wetlands, and the thing that we didn't see on the photo is, this is very close to the lake, it's outside of the zones.
Yeah.
But these are not sort of wetlands on the far extent. These are wetlands immediately adjacent to the lake, so the fertilizer concern is a little higher.
The problem, I think, a little bit is, because it's not a special permit process, we can't put our official condition in there that runs with the deed. We could recommend it, but I don't think.
But I think we can handle it if since, I mean, I think this is.
Well, we could ask Concom.
Yeah, as I say, I think conservation could add then to their decision, so we don't have a separate filing fee for them, you know, because they, because the conservation decision has to be recorded.
The only problem is, I'm not sure how well that would hold up for areas outside their jurisdiction.
That's true.
But it is, it is in the zoning bylaw that that's not allowed.
Right.
So it already is a, a town-wide requirement.
And applies, and again, we'll just include that in the memo that they're going to.
So that's in what, you know, what we write.
Yep.
Okay.
I don't think they, they may not be able to put it in as a condition, but they may, they could quote what our bylaw is in, in their decision possibly, you know, as a, you know, as a reminder, you know?
Yep, I can definitely ask.
You know, is the entire lot in the non-discharge zone?
Yeah, the whole lot.
Okay.
The whole lot is.
Yeah, so I think that would be, I think they could probably put a reminder in that it's in a non-discharge zone, not as a condition or anything like that, that, the whole lot.
By the way, I think it's great that they know that there are fertilizer concerns and guidelines. I think that's great.
Yep. They, the house was built in 1950, but when they re-subdivided the lot, 1990, so it's close to the 94 days.
That's the whole day.
Yeah.
Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion to direct the planner to send a note to the conservation commission delineating the best practices we'd like to see followed here?
Some move.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you recommend milorganite, by the way?
I'm sorry?
Do you recommend milorganite for the lawn fertilizer?
Oh, I'm, I'm not sure, to be honest. This is a good spot for a solar farm. What do you guys think?
A really big one. A few canopies.
Good luck with that.
Okay. First City Development Court and Hitching Post Road. A few meetings ago, Cal McGravy was in, you guys discussed a settlement agreement with the development of, I think, I believe a 20-year-old subdivision now Hitching Post Road. We are currently holding a $12,000 bond, but the street has not been accepted, and so the settlement was all around, how do we release the bond, is what they wanted, but we also wanted to make sure we had plans in place to accept the street eventually. I apologize, I have Donnie Barton actually making copies of the agreement form, so it was in the packet, but I will have a hard copy in a minute.
So what do we have to do? There's a, let's see, do we, do we have to do anything more at this point?
You have a motion, yes. Once you read the agreement, if you haven't read it, is a motion that you guys are in support of the agreement settlement form?
Should I leave now, because I was?
So you recuse yourself, I remember at some point.
I'll just do this, okay?
Why don't you step, you can step it up. Okay.
Okay. One thing was an as-built mylar. There was a mistake on the one that had been submitted for the plan originally, so they have now done a mylar. The correction has been made. Tim Willett has confirmed with me that it is an acceptable mylar, and he does have that. Lynn, do you have the settlement agreement?
Oh, the, the agreement, yes.
Yeah, I think I have it as well, but.
So each person has to do it individually?
No, no, it's, the agreement is to be signed by the applicant, as well as Tom Erbelis is the submitter on it.
Oh, okay, so we can just make a regular motion, so if you want to?
I move to approve the stipulated settlement agreement in the case of First City Development Court versus Town of North Andover, Jennifer Yarrett, as she is the treasurer of the Town of North Andover and the North Andover Planning Board in Land Court Case Number 15, miscellaneous 215, and to release the performance bond in accordance with the terms of said settlement agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, timing is everything. They're all set. We have the electronic copy.
Oh, we did.
So we're all set, sorry.
Yes.
Oh, did we all read?
Well, we, no, we read it draft.
Well.
If you'd like to just say, Laura.
We'll turn it into a fun one.
Well, no, we already, we already voted.
So moving right along, our mylar.
I have nothing. I, I, again, looking at the meeting, it looked like something was handed out. I have not found it. So I would ask that we just continue that until I understand what's going on. Water quality research, Peter can provide an update if you'd like, just on the meeting.
We had a meeting with the DPW director, and Julie, and Jennifer, and talked about some measures that could be shown over time, whether it's five years or 10 years, and it will take some time to prepare that. But that was the latest, and we've got a meeting coming up with Jean, Bruce, Julie, and myself, and it's coming soon.
Next Tuesday.
Yes.
So Bruce, Jennifer wants to sit down. Julie, yes, that we include Bruce, just to make sure he understands what we're looking for. And so that's next Tuesday.
I think we're on good track with it.
Good, we're moving forward.
Yeah, it's great.
Picking up momentum.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. Excellent. Are you going to take us all on a ride on your boat?
It's not all, we're picking up.
I don't know if we could all sit on the boat.
We found, we found more than the kitchen sink that I reported on last time.
Yeah.
332 golf balls picked up from the lake off the golf course, and many, many more are left there.
Wow.
You, I mean, just sort of like throw down a thing and see if you can hook it or?
Are you using radar or?
With a hook? No, you can just see it.
So you don't jump in?
No, oh, no, 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 no.
Swimming is prohibited.
Actually, John, I would, I would, I would love to bring folks around on the lake. I'm not sure I have the right boat, but the water department not only has a boat, but with, with an engine, so you wouldn't have to paddle.
That's, that's an electric thing that we see once in a while.
No, that's actually a gas engine.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's allowed for, you know, town use on the lake.
You know, because some people sponsor cleanups.
Actually, one of the things that we did in the meeting was talk about a lake cleanup because, I mean, the amount of trash is really discouraging. I mean, not, not the docks, the kitchen sink, the golf balls, the vehicle tires, the truck tires, the tire rims, the steel drums, not that. The bottles, cans, dog toys, fishing bait containers is really discouraging. There's a lot of it. So there was an effort during Earth Day in the spring, but there weren't many people that showed up for the lake portion, and it's a bad time because in the spring, the water is high, it's tougher to get to this type of trash. I'd say we still pulled out probably, you know, a dozen huge garbage bags of bottles, cans, that kind of stuff. But the, the plan is to organize a lake cleanup day in the fall when the water is low, you can access the trash, and the current thought is perhaps November 7th, a Saturday, to organize that.
Do you work from the shore when you do this?
You can help organize that, we know.
We, we do, and I think Jennifer and DPW are taking the lead, but we very much need some help with that, and the answer is from both the shore and from boats to really get at the trash, and there's several sections that are particularly discouraging because they're, they're so littered. One is 133 Great Pond Road by Ray's Pond. It's disgusting.
Yeah.
The other is Pleasant Street, where all the boats are stored and there's fishing, and then there's a couple other locations that are not as bad, but still very, very discouraging. So I think if we get a good turnout on November 7th, really could make a significant improvement.
That's great.
Yeah, yeah, anyway.
Well done.
Awesome.
Okay, Jean, and planning board rules and regulations. Should we take them one?
I don't even know where it was intended to be, the beginning.
The last, the last few agendas have had it. Is there something?
I think there are a number of things that over time we should do, like the planning board rules and regulations, because they haven't been updated in a long time, and even, you know, frankly, related to, you know, other areas where we should, we should upgrade them, so.
Okay.
Yeah, but just, you know, I, I don't think we need to do anything immediately, but we don't put it on the radar screen, so.
There was nothing specific, it was just.
Well, there was, there was three concepts. One is having a, some sort of a bond schedule, you know, a high-low range, you know, having something that, you know, what our average, you know, if it's a watershed special permit, what's, what's, what do they?
Well, I don't think that exists today, so it's not in the rules and regulations.